I was having to hold the thing up so I bet people behind me couldn't see.
Mayor Ray Whitman. Mayor Pro Tem Pam Rose here. Council members Donald Weaver.
Here.
Phil Rutledge.
Here.
Ruthie Seward. And Adam Gonzalez.
I haven't heard of Ruthie, but...
No, I haven't heard of him.
We have a quorum. Okay, do I have a motion on the consent items three and four?
I do have one question. On, evidently with an old police bill that was a year old that...
We sent a check for it and it didn't clear.
Okay, then, okay, I saw that note that that's what it was.
Check that clears it.
Okay.
And somehow that building was yours, we were supposed to pay. So we cut that way down. So the amount that we paid is what we went with.
Okay.
And it is all real old stuff. I mean, it has not been...
Well, look at the 2012 names on it.
Mayor, I have a question on the minutes before we go to those as well. On item number eight, and I think this is more for Angela, I think, budget amendments.
Yes.
And it just says to accept the changes as discussed on the budget. I would like to include in that what those changes actually were.
Okay.
Just so we have a record over in our minutes.
Okay.
And the only change actual for that meeting was the...
The recent audit.
Oh, please, yeah.
Probably...
Adding ninety-six hundred to it or something. I'd be able to look back and see, I don't know.
Probably in next month's meeting we'll have to approve more changes to the budget.
But other than that, I wouldn't mind making a motion that we accept the consent items.
Okay, I have a second.
The changes made.
I'll second that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I... That's note two on the...
Okay.
Okay, open forum. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Page one.
It's after five years of crap. You all had this job for a year now. It is so nice to be able to get one of these and understand what it says.
Thank you.
It's really a whole lot better than it was.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joanie couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted me to pass her thanks on to the city council for allowing the recycle bin out here. We had been hauling all of our recycled stuff to Tyler. So obviously, this is very, very convenient for us. So, thank you very much.
I would like to compliment our new city councilman. I asked him last meeting if he would find my trash cans, and he tells me now he knows where they are. And I appreciate that, because you could have just ignored it. But I would like to bring the city up to date why this is important. It isn't the monetary value. That's the least. But we started cleaning up our lot over on Brower Wood Bay. We did it because it needed the brush to be removed. And never did we think we'd meet with such obstacles to do what the Brower Wood Bay Association said it wanted. First, we picked up trash all the way up to the entry gate. Next, we picked up cans and glass and other things on our lot. We had to first deal with poison ivy. And each time we placed our garbage cans by the road, we would find them turned over, scattered all around. And these Texas trash was still picking up the garbage at that time at the neighbor's house next door. So we knew that we weren't in violation of any law, because if they could do it, we could. So Jack began waiting until the morning of the trash pickup to take our trash up and place it on the lot. And I took a small picnic table and chairs, and I came up with breakfast, because we were determined to make pleasant of the situation. Nothing we tried resolved the issue. I do not remember mentioning this to anyone. Next, our four trash cans were taken. And thank you, he said he found them. That was quick service, wasn't it? We had the heat stroke trying to cooperate with Brower Wood Bay. Our picnic table and chairs were taken. Did you locate them?
No.
Okay. None of the aforementioned bothered or should have bothered anyone else. What we did on our own property was none of their business. Our dues were always paid, although we received not one benefit. Now, my granddaughter wrote several letters to the head of the P.O.A., and eventually he wrote back that we had to obey the law. Now, that was during the summer of 2012, and the final decision on the garbage pickup occurred just recently. So now that we're getting past that, this will be the end of the year, and I won't mention the garbage anymore. But I wanted you to know what is going on in Brower Wood Bay, because if it's happened to me, and I know I did not one iota, nor did Jack, to this people, then it's happening to other people also.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move to swearing in some police officers. We've got two new reserve officers that are going to be sworn in tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a couple of new officers for you. I tell you every meeting when we have somebody to come in, when we have some new officers, that I'm trying to keep the community safe, doing everything in our power. I think manpower is, and woman power, is to do that. I think our officers are doing a real good job out there. Our numbers are up. We're taking people to jail. We're doing everything that we possibly can to keep y'all safe. Also, we would like to try to start a community service, basically where y'all, y'all are our eyes and ears. If y'all hear, see anything, be sure to let us know, so we can get over there to your house, check it out. We're interested in everything. Anything that is deemed suspicious by y'all sitting in your houses at night or anything, well, we're interested in. With that, I'm going to present you with these two new officers. This is going to be Alicia Anderson and James Robbins.
Please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Alicia Anderson. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully... Execute the duties...
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties... Of the office of Reserve Office.
Of the office of Reserve Office.
Of the office of Reserve Office. Of the City of Coffee City.
Of the City of Coffee City.
Of the City of Coffee City. State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And I will too...
And I will too.
The best of my ability...
The best of my ability.
Best of my ability. Reserve, protect...
Reserve, protect.
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinances of this city.
And the ordinances of this city.
And I furthermore solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I have not directly...
That I have not directly...
Or indirectly paid...
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised...
Offered or promised.
To pay...
To pay.
Contributed...
Contributed.
Nor promised to contribute...
Nor promised to contribute.
Any money...
Any money.
Or valuable thing.
Or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
Or employment...
Or employment.
As a reward...
As a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, this will bring us up now that they've been sworn in to eight officers. We lost two to bigger departments, but we've got two to take their place. So this is eight officers plus police chief nine.
What are their backgrounds?
James here, he comes to us straight out of the academy, out of Eastfield up in Mesquite, Texas. Alicia here, she comes to us, she's ex-military. She's also DPS, ex-DPS. She was weights and measures. She'd get out there, weigh the eighteen wheelers for us. And then she was parks and wildlife. And so now, she's at TJC. She's a police officer at TJC in Tyler, campus police. And she's coming to us as a reserve officer. She wants to hit the streets, and she wants to knock on some doors and not be doorm doors. She wants to get out of parking lots for a little while also, so that's what she's doing. She wants to, she says she wants to be all she can be, so this is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven. Item seven and item eight, the order one of these, one city council, to approve these payments for this fiscal year. Apparently, we have to do that every year for anything that we're paying for during the year. So, item seven, do I have a motion from somebody that we approve the payment of the $716 a month to Austin Bank? And is that the budget number from the $14,000 per year? That's included in the budget.
Okay.
That's, that figures on, that figures on that. We just have to approve it officially.
Yeah, okay.
This is for a fire department vehicle, 2009 Ford, and I think it's going to be paid off this year. So do I have a motion that we approve that payment?
How much more is it when we prove that payment?
Yeah, I have a second.
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the payment is $4,257, and that is for the fire department, the fire chief's vehicle. And there's only one more payment left on that, but this year's payment's already been made. So we had to help the fire department with that, their money didn't come in from the county, so we went ahead and made the payment, keep the bank off of them, and then they paid us back when they collected their money.
So this has already been paid?
It's already been paid. It's not, no, we had to, no, we had to approve this, we had to approve it was paid. So do I have a motion that we approve that?
I would make a motion that we approve.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, consider act one annexing SM 3506 and de-annexing County Road 4202. Okay, on the de-annexation of 4202 and the annexation of 3506, we don't have all the information completed for the annexation of 3506, and I think we just about have all the information together for County Road 4202. But I just want to make public notice that at this meeting, and we'll do the same thing next meeting, that the city is in the process of de-annexing 4202, and it will be finalized at the February meeting. So there will be a reading this month, next month, and then February we'll finalize it. So anybody have anything they would like to say about those two?
Matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, I would. I would like to say, having to do with the previous administration, I would like to thank you and the council for moving on this for us, especially on 4202. You've been more than gracious, more than helpful, and being very open and honest with us, and we sure appreciate that. And I would like to thank the council and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else having comments on those two? Okay. And we're going to proceed with 3506, but it's going to be the same. It'll be finalized at the February meeting. Okay, item 10. Continuation coverage for the city employees. Administrative agreement to be signed by mayor and at council meeting. Do you have it on the...
Yes.
We've been doing that for a long time.
Yes. I'm marking it, we need to sign.
That's nothing we have to do. That's just a...
We have to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's gotta be done.
We have to do it. Okay, item 11. Consider act one changes to community rental agreement. Pam's been working on that, so I'll let you handle it if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, if y'all look at your package, you have a copy of a new form for using the community center and a new set of applicable rules and regulations, and you should have a copy of the old ones. You will notice that anything that was in the old one is in the new one. We've just added a few extra things. I guess you've had time to look it over, and if you have questions, I'd like to hear them. As you noted, in the applicable rules and regulations, I highlighted in green some of the things I thought were, I had questions on, so...
What's 1 P.M. to close?
Yeah.
What's closed?
What's closed? What time is close? Is it midnight, or do we have a deadline on when we close? If they rent it for the afternoon, or should we set one, or...
Would it be midnight, or I don't know?
Any suggestions, or...
The first part of it's four hours, and I would consider the second part would be four hours from the date that they want it. Say if somebody wants to take it at 2:00, we're going to let them have it until 6:00.
Yeah, but you're not going to have any people that want to, I mean, if they're doing a reception or something.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
So if they rent it at 5:00, 5:00 to 10:00, or...
Yeah, I would say keep it in lock, so you have to say...
$10 an hour, minimum $50 or something.
Yeah.
So if they kept it till midnight, you know, you'd get extra revenue out of it.
Okay.
I'm just throwing out numbers, I'm looking, $5 an hour, whatever, just so you've got extra revenue. Somebody's, I mean, I know Chris doesn't mind coming up at midnight and locking the doors, but...
So should we say...
You know, somebody ought to get rewarded for that.
From 1 P.M. to 5 P.M. would be $50. Any additional hours would be charged at...
$10 an hour.
Okay. I guess we'll vote on this in a minute. Under cleaning of the facility, in our old agreement, we did not have wet mopping, and I think a question came up about wet mopping the floor. Do we want them to wet mop, or no? I have pros and cons for that. Pros, it'd be nice to have it cleaned. Cons, I think they'd mess up our walls. You know, the walls unless we have...
What walls? Unless they had...
Well, you know...
Yeah, when we get them...
The structure, that's...
Unless they had some kind of spillage, I don't think it would be necessary to do wet mopping.
That's part of just cleaning up their...
Spill a bunch of liquid all over them.
You've got to leave it in there and just kind of just play loose with it, because if there's some spillage, you don't need to wet mop. Doing wet mopping properly or not properly, you may think that's a simple subject, but not all people can mop.
Sweeping the floors, wet mopping if necessary?
That would be a nice way to put it, if necessary.
Yeah.
Or if required, or... Yeah, if required, as we feel.
Okay.
And since we're walking through, one of us, somebody's walking through with it to verify.
Right.
Yes, if required, it's very nice.
Okay, under safety provisions, if candles are used, they must be in wax-catching containers? Not given that? Because I think we have no candles or nothing, but I'm assuming that...
Her birthday candles, I'm saying.
No. Just to cover...
Hopefully, somebody rents it for a birthday party.
There was also a question of no bottles or glass containers or any, of any kind, that's wrong, of any kind, except for punch bowls from a book. I don't know that I totally agree with that, because I would like to have a bottle of wine at my table if I'm going to be there.
Can I have a plastic bowl?
I'm not my wife.
That's right.
Cardboard boxes.
Cardboard bottles. Have you been with my wife?
No. Pransia only, okay? Pransia only.
I have no problem taking that whole thing out. That's part of cleaning up.
Yeah.
Okay, delete that section, okay?
Are you saying this is reason nobody renting?
No.
Kitchen, I think, is the reason why people aren't renting.
Well, I tell you, the reason this came about was Angela is the one who normally has to speak to whoever wants to rent it, and explaining some of it or whatever just kind of got, I don't know, just the way it was set up before or whatever. This way, they can initial that they've read all the little details or whatever, and give them a set of that, say, just read this, look it over, and if you still want to rent it, we'll be happy to rent it.
We also provided a server list of telephone numbers of people that can contact in case there's a problem. I could get one. They didn't pick up a key, they could get touch anybody.
And then I feel like at any time that we come across an issue or something, we can always make some immense changes to it, so... I would like to make a motion unless there's any other discussion that we accept, accept these changes.
Do I have a second on that?
One second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we have a little resolution. Do you have a copy of it?
I do.
I don't have a copy of it.
Of what you want to make it say?
Oh, here it is.
And so text.
Yeah, here it is. Little ordinance to go along with the franchise agreement. We were required to have an ordinance to enforce the penalties of the franchise agreement. So this is just a short little ordinance.
This is on trash handling?
Yes, franchise trash agreement. An ordinance to enforce the exclusive franchise agreement between the City of Coffee City and Allied Waste Systems. Penalty, any violation of the franchise agreement shall be punishable by a fine of not less than $50 nor more than $500, exclusive of court cost for each violation. And that's all it says. So this is putting some teeth into the franchise agreement, so if we have some garbage collection companies coming in here and picking up trash, our officers incite them, and...
I think that should be worded in there, so this way they don't go after individual citizens. I don't know how the wording would be. Would it be to other providers, or other contractors, or other service providers?
Well, any violation of the franchise agreement, it's spelled out in the franchise agreement.
Okay, so I can go after individual citizens?
Oh, well, I think there's, I didn't know anybody in violation of the agreement, so...
If there was change to be made, I would like to just leave the individual citizens out of this, and I think if you took care of the providers who were doing this violation...
Now, this is basically addressed for, for the people that are coming in here to pick up trash that are not authorized.
If there was some particular wording, I'd like to make that clear, because I...
Now, Mayor, when is the franchise agreement up with Allied? Is it March?
I think it's March or April.
It's April 15.
So we have to amend this at that time?
So April, I mean, unless we're going to give Allied Waste another no-bid guaranteed contract, I mean, really, are we having such a big issue with people coming here taking trash out?
We haven't had a lot, but there have been some.
I mean, is it that much, where we have to have the police waste their time becoming garbage police for the next few months?
They're not out there patrolling the city to see if people are picking up garbage. If they happen to see some truck coming in here that's not tied to Allied Waste picking up garbage, they can stop them and cite them. They're not going to go patrolling the streets to look for garbage collectors.
Why don't you make a motion to table it till the next franchise agreement comes up? I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we table this till next franchise agreement with Allied.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to go back and redo it.
Okay, item 13, consider an act on website, making changes, updating possibly new webmaster. At the EDC meeting, they voted to change the webmaster, so we're going to be in the process of getting some bids from people to do the website. And at the next meeting...
We had that young man doing it?
The college kid. He's not keeping up with the timely manner. But at the next meeting, they agreed to let him go by the end of the year, so until the end of the year, he's still doing it.
Oh, okay.
So January, at our January meeting, we'll hopefully be in a position to hire someone.
Well, when you talked about taking bids, is the Economic Development Board not set up paying exactly what they designated they wanted to pay for that?
We basically just put this, you know, we're not going to, after the first year, depending on what the city council wants to do, we agreed to continue paying for it, you know, as long as it's reasonable, and that's really all we agreed upon, so...
They just want to do the...
Yeah, I, I mean, if that's what the city wants, you know...
Are you open to suggestion?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would like to recommend Lauren Savage. I think you would make an excellent webmaster.
We're not going to, the EDC doesn't want to have any part in it other than just the financial part of it.
So you want to leave it up to the council?
We want the city to be responsible for running the website. Yes, Mayor.
We're going to get three bids on that.
We're going to be in charge of it.
We should get three bids.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to get a couple more. We'll have some hopefully by the next meeting. Okay, item number 14. Discuss an act on fire department paying half of their gas bills as voted on at the March meeting. Pam put together some figures, and she and I had some discussion about it. The fire department has just about $4,000 in their checking account, and they still got half a year ago. And if we asked them to pay their half of the gas bill up to this point, we would take half of their funds. And we are, we are running under budget for the gasoline, and we budgeted to pay the full amount for the fire department and the police department, and...
What is, is getting gas running?
About $4,000 every six months.
Well, about $675 a month. It's by month there. If you look under statement date, it's by month, and then just go by the fire department...
So we budgeted $4,000, was that it?
We budgeted, we didn't budget per, I don't know that we budgeted per department, but we budgeted...
$4,000 worth of...
For the court, for the fire department.
Yeah.
For the year?
Yeah, for the year, $16,000 for. But now, if we did this in May, Earl, you said March.
Well, we approved the budget. The budget's approved for this fiscal year, so...
Yeah, but we did the half gas in March, but told to take effect in May, so...
To take effect in May.
Take the part of what's been done.
They've already spent $4,900. Well, that's not this fiscal year. $600 of that was last year.
Okay.
No, that's not right, $1,400.
I have $4,158 from June through November. Is that right?
That's quite close, yeah.
So we're about half of what we budgeted. I mean, we already spent basically what we budgeted.
For the fire department.
Right. How are we doing on the, the police?
Well, overall, when I look at the budget figures, I think we budgeted $1,700 a month for gas, and we're spending about $1,500.
Yeah, we budgeted $16,400 for police and other, and that's about less, a little less than $1,300 a month.
My take on this is that the fire department has one more $4,000 payment to make. And after they make that payment, then they don't have any obligations, and maybe we can start getting them some money for them for gas after that.
Can we help them out now?
We have them as we go, you know.
So what you're saying is they actually owe us?
What we're asking is, we had, we had it in our minutes that we were going to have the fire department pay for one half of their usage, and we have not been having them do that. So do we want to now say, because we were not doing it, do we need to say in our minutes that we will continue to pay for their gasoline allocation?
Why haven't we been, they haven't had the money to pay?
I guess.
Is there a reason why?
I don't know why they haven't been paying it. I don't know why.[1701.87]
Well, he just said, he just said that we hadn't given him any figures on it, but we've got the figures together, and I got the looking at it. If we, if we ask them to pay what they would have been paying, we would take half of their funds. And that's, and if they keep on paying half of it from, from this on to the end of the year, they're gonna run out of money just on gasoline.
End, end of year being June thirty?
June thirty.
So what kind of a motion are we looking for?
I'm looking for a motion just to kinda table that issue until after the next fiscal year. Unless they start running over budget. Or if our gasoline starts running over budget.
How about if we propose that we continue to pay for their gasoline as it is unless they run over the budget amount per month? Then they would have to pay for that.
I would just inform that they, they are going to get another ten thousand dollars, you know, for their budget first, if they get quarter of the year, the fire department will. So they have money starting off.
They get about ten thousand, and they're gonna take forty-two hundred dollars of that and make that payment.
And if they get that...
It should be first, fourth.
On the first of the year?
Yeah.
Well, that's right, it's in the first quarter.
Yeah.
Depended on when they submit all their paperwork. You know, this year, they were very late in submitting the paperwork, so they didn't receive it until the October timeframe.
Yeah, I understand there was a change in the fire marshal or something over there that, that didn't get taken care of.
Well, there's, that's another discussion, but we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Okay, I wanna make sure, you're saying they owe us four thousand in back monies?
No, they owes two thousand.
In back monies?
It was half of that, four thousand beginning.
Okay.
So you're asking that we collect only just half of that, half that they owe us?
No, we have already agreed that they should have already been paying this half of their allotment.
Right.
But we've not collected any of it.
Which at this point, totally is too bad.
The question now is, do we wanna forgive that and wait until the first of the year, and see where we are, or wait until a specific point in time, or...
What was our main purpose in trying to get that half number? In the first place, if we wouldn't put any teeth into it and get it on the money?
City's financial situation, city's running out of money.
We were trying to cut wherever we could and put money wherever we could to cut on the budget back when we were...
Well, since you haven't collected it, there's no point in trying to collect it now, I mean, we, no.
I would, I would make a motion that we forgive what they owe and up through the end of March, the first quarter, and then we take a new look at it going forward, so we'll know for next year's budget. It'll give us some timeframe to...
Okay, look at, look at it for next year's budget?
Look at, yeah, going forward.
Do I have a second to that?
Okay, let me, let me, I'd make a motion that we forgive all their indebtedness for every month up through the end of March, this coming month. Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
And at that point, we relook at it as far as going forward and, and make decisions for next year.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor or any questions?
Why don't we just forgive, forgive the debt for, up until December, start in January?
He's asking, he's asking to forgive it through March.
Through March, if he's gonna get his ten thousand dollars, that way we'll know what he's got and where the financial situation will be.
But come January, I mean, he ought to be able to start paying his port, I mean, 'cause it's on us, 'cause we didn't collect it, 'cause, you know.
I don't know when he will, he probably won't have his money right at the first of January. He may not even have it at the end of January, he's gonna have it sometime January, February, or March, but...
Maybe he'll wanna start owing us, like, like he said, in January rather than this total amount here, so I'd, I'd agree with what Rudy was saying.
So you could amend your motion to be through the end of December?
Well, that, yeah, and that's three weeks, so it's, the, that, that's obviously what I was originally saying, 'til I thought about the timeframe.
Yeah.
The, so I don't, I have no issue amending that to that time.
So his motion stands with the amendment, it's gonna be, instead of March, it'll be December, the end of December.
December third first.
Then I'll second that.
Any other questions, discussion? Are you all in favor? Aye.
Yeah, the, the main reason I want something there is so we'll, it comes back when we have to look at it again.
Well, I didn't wanna wipe the fire department out of all their funds.
No, I don't, nobody does, nobody does, that's, yeah.
Okay, consider an act of on Coffee City, municipal offices holidays for two thousand and fourteen. Now, is this, that's for the calendar year, right?
Yeah. And these are all the holidays that the county have in...
Yes, these are the county holidays.
Yes, that's right.
Are these identical to ones we voted on last year?
Yeah, these are the same ones, we do, same ones we do every year.
I have no idea.
Administrative mayor's choice during the calendar year.
I think that's the one way you get to...
Does that mean I get a day off?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, without pay.
Yeah.
And we mean that.
I think, I think that means the mayor has the authority to give somebody a day off.
Okay, so you're, you're saying like, in case, like, somebody doing an outstanding job or something?
Yeah, I think that's what that means.
Since for the, for the city, so I would imagine you're giving like the whole city a day off?
The city, the city.
How many days would that be left in one?
Just one.
We have three, we have three, oh, well, we wouldn't shut the city down.
Just, just be one employee at a time.
One employee at a time.
I was just thinking, I said holiday...
Unless you wanna come down here and answer the phone.
Well, we're going over holiday schedules, so that's why I was, I mean, if we're just giving an employee here and there, the city's not closing.
No, that's, if you got an employee that needs to pay a special way off or something, then the mayor has to...
Well, we're going over city office holidays, so there's still employees here in the city still, that's why I was wondering, that's an administrative, that you're giving the whole city day, and I don't have a problem with that if you do that.
Could I have a motion we accept these?
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Have a second on that, okay, all in favor? Okay, mayor's report, I'll have a couple of things. Coffee Landing Road, the culvert is in. Fire department has it chained down on a trailer right now. It'll be delivered to the construction site on Friday morning. The county is going to install it over there, and it's going to shut down that road from about to nine AM until about one PM. If there's an emergency, they can get you through there, but normal traffic going through there, they're trying to discourage.
Friday, the thirteenth.
Friday, Friday the thirteenth.
Yeah, wow, that is Stacy, yeah.
So anyway...
I'm not working, I can't get to work.
Yeah. So the, the county was gracious about timing it, so it didn't interfere with school buses and, and stuff like that, so...
The hours, but the date was not selected by the county. No, Mayor, you're not gonna get me for that. I agreed to do it between nine and one. I would've done it on Thursday, the twelfth, nine.
Think about it this way, it's gonna be well pagged, because when the garbage trucks quit running over it after that, we'll...
Exactly.
Okay, the other item I wanted to mention was, I did go to the EDC meeting last Thursday night. I'd just like to say that the EDC group is working very well together. They have really good discussions about items, and they don't always all agree on everything, but they are gracious. They graciously accept everybody's opinions on things, and they're doing an excellent job, and I just wanted to mention that, so... Okay, EDC report.
You've, you've already taken, taken all of them? EDC met last week, I'll give you the financial report first. In the general account, we had a beginning bank balance on November the first of a hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred. We had sales tax receipts for the month of November of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, for a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars available. We had two expenses, we had an expense report that involved Shalina Bevins and myself going to Waco to a, a state meeting on economic development and the open meetings law. And we had an expenditure for eight hundred and fifteen dollars made to the city of Coffee City, and that's how we reimbursed the city for the secretary of services that Shalina gives us. So we had nine hundred and fifty-six dollars worth of expenses, which left us a balance at the end of November of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. In the hotel motel account, we had beginning balance November the first of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. We had hotel motel tax receipts of one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, for a total of forty thousand four hundred available. No expenses, so we ended the month with forty thousand four hundred. We also, at the meeting last week, approved a big catfishing tournament that's gonna be coming to Coffee City. I, I believe in the first quarter of next year, I can't, I can't remember, is, is Mr. Bagley still here, is he here? What was that fellow's name?
That was Ken Freeman.
Ken Freeman.
Ken Freeman.
Which I guess is a, is a big, big promoter, so we're gonna, we're gonna help him with that. And then we also had a discussion, I've talked about this before, but it's not only a, a goal of this EDC, but the former EDC, to, to really try to finish the wonderful facility we have next door. And I, I know that EDC is on, is on board to get this done. I'm gonna take the lead, starting this month, Mr. Weaver is also gonna be involved in that. We're gonna try to have some changes done by the end of this month. We hope to go to bid sometime in January, and, and maybe even complete construction, which involves just a kitchen and a pantry at this point, sometime in the first quarter of next year. So whoever said that's the reason we're not renting, hopefully we're gonna remedy that, and EDC will be paying a hundred percent of those, those expenses. And then along with that, we will also be purchasing stackable chairs and tables, so we can accommodate quite a few folks over there. So everything else at the meeting was pretty routine, so...
We appreciate the EDC doing that.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Who is the house at Briarwood?
That is a property that Mr. Gullison owns over there, that he rents from time to time.
Okay.
And he doesn't file each month, it depends on whenever he has somebody over there.
Okay, well, they would just, quite a few dollars for, for one month, I've not seen it on the list before.
Yeah, that, that would be probably for three months.
Okay.
I might mention that when the treasurer of EDC starts spouting off about all the money that they have, I hope people don't think that city money, city doesn't have any access to bill fund.
I, I would love to, to help the city of Coffee City out, but they just won't let me do it, so, so I'm gonna try to, we're gonna try to do it in other ways that are legal, so... And, and when we were down at the EDC meeting in Waco, you know, we ran all this by, the big wheels down there, about what we wanna do next door.
Yeah.
And since we're a type B corporation, they gave us a green light to it, they said there shouldn't be no problem whatsoever. So, so we want, we wanna get that job done, hopefully before the, end of the first quarter. And it, it will be a big asset to the citizens of Coffee City.
Oh, yeah. Okay, municipal court report.
We had forty-nine new paces filed for the month of November. Three were compliance dismissals after driver's safety course. Three were dismissed after deferred disposition. And three were dismissed after proof of financial responsibility. We collected a total of seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Of that, the city gets to keep a little over four thousand. And I am happy to say this month that Pioneer collected a little over two thousand dollars for us.
That's the first time in a long time.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
We met our budget number there, so... Quarterly taxes will be done, they'll be due at the end of the month.
Okay.
I've got all that in the spreadsheet, so...
Thank you.
Police report.
It is for the month of November. We had one vehicle accident, calls for service was fifteen. We had two burglaries, two assaults, had five callouts, had one agency assist, and four arrests. And that's for a total of twenty, twenty calls.
Okay, fire report.
In the month of October, we had twenty-four calls for service. Call volume was above average, there's three building fires, three rubbish grass or burn van fires, nine medical calls, one tree obstruction, two boat calls, zero law enforcement standby, three NVA's, zero burn van violations, two public service, zero good intent. We currently have thirteen senior firefighters with one new prospect at this time. Past training, we conducted CPR, first aid for police and fire department on the ninth of November. Explication of tech one and tech two was the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of November. There were thirty, forty-one personnel from fourteen different departments that attended or supported the class. We had two representatives from T E E X that were observing and certifying the training. ISO classification inspector Chase Miller and his assistant were here on the twenty-second of November. They have not given us any detail, any results yet. Have to call into Mr. Miller, ask him for some information as to their busy. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move into an executive session, and we're gonna do the executive session in the mayor's office, so it'll be running out of...
Can I make one comment first?
Okay.
I, I know the weather's cold, and nobody's probably on the lake right now, but if you get out there, there are so many big trees floating that were dried on the bank, that are, you gotta be especially careful. I mean, I'm getting logs this big around washing up on my bank. And, I mean, I had one the other day that was twenty foot long, that big, it was a tree, so just be careful.
Okay, so you all are welcome to stage for a re-convene in a minute. Seriously, put to you. Okay, we're gonna reconvene our regular meeting. We didn't have any discussion items that we need to take any action on tonight, so, in the executive session, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, turn to the court.
Your office ain't lucky.
I did what, what did I do? I guess I...
Yeah, I guess I'm perfect.
Oh.
Oh, my God.
Would you like to be on my pants? I've got all the campaigns on my pants. All my campaigns on, if I get a bigger, I can trip you. Would you like to see me a sign, would you be on my pants?
I will, she was...
All that Christmas, it would be nice, make a sign up there.
That's right.
Yeah, we need for him a sign, I'll put you up there, I'm standing there. Let you think that we take a picture.